I need to leave about nine thirty Gene, I got a funeral I gotta go to today.
I can see these people pass away and I know them, they're going back after the same age in my country.
The guy went to school with his dad's pathway, I just don't know, down he laid out today.
Alright, this time we'll call the River County Commissioner, Sir, for the form, send an approval on the name of the bill. I guess you guys know we're gonna get another judge here, do they sign it? It's supposed to sign it, so there's gonna be another circuit judge, I guess every circuit gets another one, is that right?
No, I think it's just, uh, because of the case load.
Oh, okay. So now, you're gonna have another judge, and then you got one that's sick and one that's gonna retire, so we got three of them's gonna get replaced up in the next year, year and a half. So. You know, every prosecutor in the whole circuit's gonna be switched out again.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
He's having trouble getting somebody.
Yeah, he can't find anyone.
He got one applied from New York and one applied from, um, Texas, I think.
You're working where?
Texas. But they couldn't pass the one New York and Texas, so we come Missouri, because it's a lower state, we think it passed.
Excuse me.
Thank you. She was. No.
He's beautiful.
I know, I'm getting kinda scared. And I'm not really scared of anything.
Sure falls buttering you up or something.
No, I may have to leave after this meeting, I may have to leave when Mr. Hamstoss, just so I can get out of here.
Oh, yes. I wanna run away too.
Y'all go and take me away.
I looked at the news this morning and it said two to seven inches rain over.
Is that what they're calling for now? I haven't seen the new forecast.
Great.
And you know what, the fellow that was in here with that floating business down in Piney the other day, I mean, it's Memorial Day weekend, it's one of their big times.
Yeah, they got a strike, they got, they got the motorcycle rally this weekend.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Everything, I don't think I planned anything.
No, it, uh, it's.
I'm gonna pull my Harley out and I'm gonna sell it. That's my plan for the weekend though. We need, uh, we've got sixteen hundred miles on it. Like brand new.
Uh, you know what a person thinks, they need stuff, when you're young, when you get old, you don't need nothing. Just don't. Need anything.
Every time I think I need stuff, I get it for a while, but I like, I never use that. Now I'm gonna look for me a seventy-two truck, I think.
A what?
Chevy.
A what?
Seventy-two.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, my own, three of them, one guy's got three of them. One of them's full of drive. Still see.
I know there's one at, but I don't know if it's seventy, might be a late sixty. It turned lanes, you know.
I've had a sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy-two.
I guess. Sixty-two Grand Prix's or something.
Kenny might, Kenny's got parts for them, I like.
Who?
My brother-in-law.
Oh, I got tons of parts.
Kenny L, and he's probably got parts for them.
Well, he bought those parts off. Yeah, that guy.
Oh, really?
He's been after me to get parts.
Oh.
Uh, have we checked our, uh, county email or anything here lately? I'd heard in the wind that, uh, that it's Plasky County Shelter workshop, and they built a new facility. Some, something's went on that they're, uh, they're supposed to be sending us an email to, they want the commissioners to come to the facility.
I haven't got it. Okay, unless it went through today.
One of the, one of the lady's husband, my wife, and they had sent, they'd told her about it, well, it'd be, uh, Mike Peter's, uh, wife.
It probably gone through today.
I don't know if they remodeled it, built a new one or something, but they wanted us to come, just having a luncheon or something, but I don't know when it is, but I can try.
Yeah, see, check it, see if we can check his email, see. That's what it goes.
Yeah, I thought they said they had sent it out, but they want us to, um, visit what we would, but.
Yeah, it's been a while.
The money guy, where's, where's our money man?
Well, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, dude, he sent an email.
I need, so, this is what they awarded, this is for the Ross Bridge. And I need to signature for the Dean on that one. This one, or is this authorized? I'll make a, I'm gonna make a, so I'll make some copies and I'll give you one each, because there, this right here explains, if you can look at it right now, you won't. Explains what, uh, what they came up with on that.
This is just on the Ross Bridge?
On the Ross Bridge, for the, uh, for the, for the, uh, completed roads, we need the, uh, we, we still waiting on, on Kylie to do all the paperwork for the, uh, for the hours paid and for the, uh, for the staff. And then on the uncompleted, we're waiting on the project, it's, because they already approved that project, but that's when Seema came down saying that they won't do more than two inches of rock or destruction materials, if that's.
You're gonna type the name and just print it in there, just type. Just type the name.
Yeah, just print names, alright. And send them, um, once I send that, that's when the issue is shared, and then, um, and then they were asking for, uh, maintenance evidence, so rock tickets. And I talked to Kylie, she said that all she gotta do is come, and I have to, I can submit that next Wednesday.
Yeah, they, uh, will extend all that over, let me let Kevin look at that.
And signature.
That's it, it's dumb. Yeah, hot, it's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
That one's pretty hard and shady. Hundred and eighty-six, no.
Yeah, but there's twenty, twenty-eight thousand if we got a five, so.
And then on, I don't have, so on the news for the other disasters, on the March fourteen, FEMA, they still haven't decided if they're gonna do a declaration on that yet, and on the other disasters, we're waiting, I have the paperwork ready, I already started it, it says, and as soon as they say it's a disaster declaration, I submit. Um, that's the same deal with this, with the sirens, so what we're gonna do with the sirens is, I have an, uh, an opportunity, and, um, the G's are gonna help me do it, because they've done it before. And it means whenever they ask for mitigation, doesn't approve, it doesn't mean they're rejecting it, it means it's, we scored lower than other counties that had more of the damages, or more of a project. Um, and then sirens being submitted on the hazard mitigation, the hazard pool was flooding, I think that's what they saw, but whenever we get declared on the March fourteen, they're gonna stack it on that one, to see if we get approved. But we're also gonna write a program, this called a stacked project with hazard mitigation, and that should give us, whatever money is left, that should give us a lead sum for the rest of the asylum.
So is this what you're expecting once it's completed?
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what they're paying for. FEMA's getting way more, uh, stretched. You know the word I was looking for. Well, what I mean, when you're getting really, yeah.
I didn't see anything in the last week, has it been in the last week?
I think so.
You want me to try and call them?
You gotta make copies of that, yeah, make copies of that. Let me go with the.
Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
That should've told my wife about it, I think she's the one.
I'm the old group.
Yeah, she's the person in Roosevelt.
Thanks, Greg.
Yell me anything else from today?
Nothing, go ahead.
Move, don't pass all out there.
Thanks, Mike.
He just explained what's going on with FEMA and the grant.
And then what, what Kevin says is gonna get paid on the Ross Bridge. Once everything's submitted.
Yeah, people's been real concerned about it, the guardrail playing flat on the bridge. Been that way for about eight months, about here, this November.
November fourteenth, I think, is when they all.
Seven days in the rain.
Yeah, over the next five days, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's eighty-five percent Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Wow. Voters, no, voters, they'll be quick.
It's not gonna be a good holiday weekend for people.
No. They can't believe it. This is great.
Yes, sir. I can have, uh, ABC lots.
He told us to have a quiet day, he's wanting to have a calm time.
Yeah. He better not say the Q word.
No, I told him that when he walked in, when he walked in, I said, have a quiet day, have a quiet day.
Where did he go?
Actually, he's making coffee.
Hey, well, I just, just trying to know that, uh.
No, it was his fault, he said, he said the Q word.
He, okay, I said it was sincerity, I wasn't being smart about it. Because it was.
Was, no, it was right.
Uh, just to let you know, we, we were approved for an equipment grant, uh, it was a fifteen thousand matching grant, well, thirty thousand matching, yeah, half matching. So we've shown them that what we spent for, uh, for that fifteen grand, so they're gonna give us fifteen grand DPS. We're gonna use that to pay for, uh, because all of our vests expire this year, they're all twenty-twenty-five, so we use that to, uh, pay for all of our new, uh, body armor for the road. So.
Any more men on the car?
They started on yesterday. We gotta get a cage up there for one of them, but Rex is gonna handle that. So. Hopefully next week.
Yeah, hopefully.
Start getting to a week. And they take two away.
Maybe, maybe three, because I think the Tahoe is actually counting that.
And then once, uh, once we get our five-year, ten-year bottom line about the, uh, about our, the shop we wanna make, the shop that was built for a shop, that's not a shop, that we wanna make a shop.
Storage facility?
That's what it is right now. Uh, the annex. Because I had Heenan Construction come out and they're, they owe me, uh, a new bid, they gave me one, Richard gave me one bid, he's gonna give me another bid, uh, they're just, it's just gonna square it off, put a toilet in there, and put a, a sink, uh, a bathroom, and then a sink on the outside, like a wash basin for dirty hands and stuff like that. Uh, I projected twenty thousand for that, and they're, he's a little bit over that, but he's gonna look at the numbers and, and see what, uh, what they can do. Now with that, the numbers come back and it shows that we can save money by doing our own, uh, oil changes, tires, brakes, simple maintenance. Uh, to get the rest of that, or to help get that shop, will we be able to access any funds for the, uh, for, for the, the county, the county ma, the county fund to help improvements for the facilities? Not them, huh?
No, because we're gonna do all of it, like.
No, the, what's the improvement, uh, capital improvement?
Okay, so that is the courthouse, um, I don't think that can be used anywhere other than Honda Square.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about the courthouse down at the sheriff's office?
No, when they, when they.
That's an official courthouse, I mean.
No, well, what she's trying to tell you, the way they wrote this up, they originally do it, you can't. I couldn't even use it over there.
I'll give it the, yeah.
I thought you changed that, thought you gotta change.
No, that was what the voters voted on.
That's when this building.
This building, that's where it come from.
I don't really know, he's talking about just the regular capital funds.
That is the regular, that is the regular.
I thought it was a setup one, that was.
There's, oh, I had, yeah, but that is, I gotta pay the, like, twenty percent on the roof.
Yeah, oh, you're talking about just in the regular, didn't you?
Yeah, 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 I know where he's going with that, yeah, that, that's in there for the, is our max twenty percent of three million? Yeah, I got a twenty percent match of three million, you pay out all that. Like everybody else pays their twenty percent, I gotta, twenty percent, it wouldn't be right if I didn't pay twenty percent. Then everybody in the world out there, Dave Mummy, too, they'll say, how come you didn't pay twenty percent? I gotta pay the same as everybody else. That's my, my fee. I have to, you know, but if I didn't, all the groups that I made pay twenty percent was broken.
Appreciate everything you do when this weather gets here, I just don't know what you're doing.
Oh, this is our copy? You got a copy?
Yeah, yeah, we, we talked about that too, I was, uh, and then you all utilized the equipment, yeah, that's, uh.
You did get one on one bid, right?
That.
For down there. You got more than one bid? Okay.
Um. Yeah, that, that's still, I mean, that's still an option too, I mean, that, or not an option, but a, a way to go as well. Uh, I like, because we're making improvements for the building itself, that's what I was looking, looking at to, uh.
Did you get the, uh, the prices for tire changer, balancer?
Yes. Well, we have another, we, the lift, the ten, what's Roger, eleven?
The one that he got down there?
Yeah.
Uh, installed, it was six thousand.
Yeah. We were, yeah, but we, we, we were originally, well, we weren't quoted for the lift, he said the, the lift that we've, that, uh, the person that sells the lifts, that, that he knows sells them for like ten grand, well, Roger found, Roger got that one installed down there, uh, and sold for six grand, right under six grand, so. Uh.
It's on Milwaukee.
Yeah.
Make sure we have a lift one time.
Yeah.
Do, I'll do one time.
Yep.
He had a duly on here the other day. I don't know if you guys is utility bed, what that? Bumps it up there.
Yeah, I mean, the beds aren't that heavy, I mean.
I think this is the twelve thousand ounce lift.
It was bigger than what he was originally getting.
Yeah.
That's funny.
And then the tire changer will do the, uh, the larger, uh, wheels off. For the one-time tires.
That was, uh, nine.
It was seventeen thousand for both.
Yeah, with everything.
And that was a hundred, so.
Twenty-seven thousand, lift and a tire changer and a.
Yeah.
Well, that, and, well, we also added in the computer, uh, computer as well, so that, that brought it up to twenty grand, so I, I projected fifty grand for everything, and I'm, I'm, we're still under fifty grand. Uh, depending on what we can get that shop built for, or the office. I just, I'd, I'd like at least a heater in there, because, uh, it doesn't matter, it's gonna be, uh, it gets cold as I'll get out in that, in that place, because it's just nothing but ten, the roofs, uh, phoned, but the sides of the buildings aren't there.
They're insulated, so.
That's all I got, firestarter was put out. When that thing went off, it took the barrel up over the roof, did you, thank God, it, it blew the barrel off of the water cannon onto the roof. Uh, and we have a, a hole about like that on the roof. So I gotta, gotta get up there and repair that. Our MOU went up to, uh, Highway Patrol yesterday, because we gotta do an MOU with Highway Patrol with, with mules and stuff for the, for the reader, so that went up yesterday, that was, that's all. That's the only thing right now, block was waiting on to, uh, but they're not installed or anything like that, just getting all the paperwork. I's dotted, T's crossed. What's that?
What?
The MOU with Highway Patrol to be able to put on hot lists for mules, or, yeah, for mules.
Combines the two systems, so that.
For the block camera?
Yeah, so it's, uh, basically instead of entering it twice, you're just entering it one place.
Excellent.
Here's.
Here's seat.
You got, hey.
You got, you got a hot seat up there, you can sit down there?
I, no, it's good to, I didn't.
You don't have anything.
I thought you was gonna bring those, yeah, and show us your, uh, prosecutor.
You gotta find me one. You gotta find, like, some extra law.
We feel like the volunteer needs a bunch of stuff, though.
I got it done in two years.
Thank you, Darrell. I have personality to go after competitors.
Take a lot.
Our website, just, our website is, uh, it's in it, we, we're, you're able to look at it, uh, and see, it, it, it's going through the, trial phase by us to look and see, you know, if any additions or subtractions or changes or anything like that, so, uh, so the, and the app is also up and running. Uh, it's still not connected, they're still gotta connect it to our crime store for, uh, our daily activities and for our jail, uh, and the inmate population, but other than that, they, I've been getting tips, I've been getting, uh, no home checks, but I've gotten tips, I've gotten, but just comments about the, they, like the app and easy to use and, all the schools are represented on it, so they can find their SRO, they can find the, uh, administration, so.
Yeah, for emergency management, we, we haven't, and that's the good thing, I don't have to use the, uh, damage reports and everything, it's just another option for us to, to capture those damage reports and power, we'll, we'll turn power lines down that happen in county. We discuss that, it's a little bit of a blow, so, and when the weather alerts are pretty accurate, too, so.
Yeah, stand push notifications for the last ones.
And we, we got, uh, IPOs up, I don't know if I mentioned that, that's the, uh, you don't have to be signed up or anything, it works like the emergency alert systems or DAS, it's like just on your phone, as long as you have your locations on, and everybody will get it, they don't have to, but we do have IPOs for us. So we gotta approve, this is gonna pay, takes a little bit longer for FEMA to get, and fuck with.
And it'll do that.
Sure, if you have any questions, would you like to make any comments regarding the incident, or the, uh, I don't know, what kind of advice you want to call back?
It was a, it was a firestarter, what we kind of figured it was, uh, but still, you gotta keep precautions, they, uh, we called EOD, we hidden off the area, and EOD came out, they hit it with a water cannon to disable it. They took an X-ray of it, they could see that it was, it had two different types of fuels in it, there was no, uh, shrapnel inside of it. And after the, after they hit it with the water cannon, and they were able to look at it, it was full of, uh, kind of like dryer lint, with a wick, like a diesel fuel and like camp fuel. Uh, and it had, like, it had a wick on it, so it, it, uh, it's something you will put in your campfire to help start a fire.
Okay. This was not anything that was intended for interference, it said, give us some of your evidence room for.
Evidence.
Okay.
Just to get evidence, I just wanted to stop and saw it and.
Uh, so this wasn't any recent case, it was something you just got recently?
Uh, I would have to check the date, I don't know what, uh, what date was on it, it was an old, it was an old, uh, cylinder-shaped cardboard thing.
So the issue is, was found in storage in the evidence room, and something that was brought in recently, and maybe you had to deal with something being. You had to deal with something being, just.
No. Yeah, I would have to check. I would have to check the dates.
Okay, but we're not dealing with anything this.
Nothing nefarious. It was not meant to do any damage to anybody. Not planted or anything like that. We just.
Hey, concern that's on circle four. In other words, you got evidence tech who's doing its job and that you're presenting some issues that. Thanks, sir.
Any predictions on the water for the weekend?
Um, it's gonna be a rainy weekend. At least since of now, the models are showing, uh, mainly moving into like twelve A M, one A M, my timeframe, like. Tomorrow, Saturday, Saturday, Sunday, but. There's, it's just gonna be rain. There might, there always a possibility of a little sun or storm pop up, but there's no actually threat. Or hail or just.
We got a lot of. People coming in from river.
So that's, I think that's gonna be a threat is with the rain and, uh, the rivers are flooded. We should, but only was the, we do the flooded as always. And then the big piney and, well, none of it flooded a little bit, but not enough to, you know, go over. But. With that, so the rains, the rivers are receiving right now. They, they just pressed and, uh, this could be, uh, this, they're gonna be. A little bit more rapid. I think that's the fear is overdo borders or, but.
Just keep their eyes out for winter.
I, I won't be here. I'm not going anywhere this weekend. So D two B will be downstairs, but.
I'll be around. I'll be here this weekend. Don't plan on going there.
Can't put in motion to start the race.
Yeah, I got a bit of, I think we'll start the rain dance.
Overroll.
I can invite you to one of those rain dances that we do. Get your headband.
My wife's not town this weekend, so I'm on my own with five. We can't get outside of this race for, yeah, over.
You'll be wore out.
Well, that's how I'm playing, playing the mud.
Yeah.
I say I got it. I got it outside with the rain boots on. We're stopping in the mud.
I'm not thick, man.
We dodged a bullet on this last one. It was, it is, uh, it hurt on her area. D A S being handled, so it's very clear. Even with the damage. I did make contact with. They wrote requests.
Might need a canoe.
See, and. Oh. I had a meeting with, uh, American.
I thought maybe we were the plague. Everybody left.
I see there's important. I just followed him.
Are you, uh, any plumber? Are you next week?
Yeah. Go by there today. I can go by this afternoon.
Oh, yeah, let's do this afternoon. It's, I'll be here till like noon and.
Okay.
And then, uh, I'm, I'm looking to see how we can, uh, remediate those, that, uh, closure on, uh, April. Um, the best I can come up with is M O D said that they can close from their end. It's called a, a hard close. And they can also provide a soft closure with means, but the soft closure, it would be up to road authorities, but they can provide the barriers. Um, so when it comes to the gates and has a radiation that is closed, we're not doing anything again. Unless you, I mean, we find, uh, a company gate that, that can do grass and put it through the gates. I like the gates.
Been five months. It gets flooded. I'm not living right. Not living. Biggest thing I'd like to do was someone's like to get them to. I get that one highway.
Lens cracked. Looked like your lens cracked when you looked at it. He must have broken it. Yes, you looked at it, it cracked. Yeah, dude.
You know, uh. I got an hand with Mo God up here. I know, I know people. I, I just need to go talk.
Pretty here in frame. They, they were here, but they, so yesterday was not a, we did bring good topic, but yesterday was, we can establish a coalition. So.
Did they talk about work up here at, uh, Road Rangers over past any?
No, they didn't talk that, but they spoke about the, uh, one fifty nine. And that's supposed to start her next, uh, next summer. Uh, you're gonna add that third lane.
Yeah.
They spoke about it in the South Roberts meeting yesterday as well. Um, but this, so we'll, we'll have, so we, we all, everybody that was there, that were, the ones that were there. They agreed to have a coalition. So while we've been at the terminal, we're gonna be water. I think that's too much for, uh, the people at emergency services, at least two times a year. And one time with the other counties in the region and the two times a year with all that folks out of the state. So in the next few, in the next few months, we'll have another meeting. But, uh, but I have those contact information. They did mention that, that one of the things that they could provide us for all signs, you know, and the road closures. But I'll be, I, I think.
What happened to all of? We bought a whole warehouse.
Okay, barriers and something like that.
Cones, barriers. We got air.
And that worked.
It was this western district shit.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't have none of it.
So, I mean, what about the, the yellow, the orange plastic barriers?
We bought a whole bunch of stuff. A guy went out of business and stuff.
I looked at it online, but.
Ask T N D about it. See if T N D knows where that is. Cause I wanna know because the, the old commercials that they're bought it and brought it to.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have none of it.
Those barriers, the, the orange barriers are good.
Do they take it over to your place?
No, we don't have any.
You don't have it over there.
I haven't yet.
Sure.
Yeah, the biggest thing is what's not. Cave roads being. Whenever they've got to drive from, what is Y highway? Eight or nine miles from.
Yeah, you need to post it way up there.
Then they gotta turn around and drive back so they grow from. Out of their way when they could have. Twenty eight then home. But. And we tried to put signs there before and we did right there at Moke's Auto Body and the state said those are counting signs. They cannot be on state right away.
Yeah.
If we can get them to put theirs up there and put a message board, water over the road at Riddle Bridge, cave road.
We got it on here, but.
Turn around there and say nine miles down, nine miles.
That would be for those folks there, but the ones that are areas, like Dean was saying, the barriers.
We've been talking for a while.
I, I think, I think the gates.
It'll, it'll come.
Yeah, but it'll be paid for. Everybody's definitely donating, kinda like we did.
Well, I'll, I'll keep looking to see what I can find.
We'll, we'll come up with something.
Right, road bridge and them. We got like two vehicles and. Daniel's got one.
Yes, well, we'll talk later on, but I, I think the gates is better than the barriers.
And you know, most people in that.
And they'll push those barriers. They'll fall in their favor. Now you're crossing another, uh, metal issue.
I know.
Or they'll seal the barriers. You told me, yeah.
Yeah, enough.
I know.
But you left. I'm back.
I didn't do it.
Uh, you, you're right. You didn't. In fact, there's supposed to be two more.
Okay.
Um.
All right.
He's gonna email you.
All right. I'll see what I can do.
Those barriers, they're, they're good, but they're not that great.
No.
Don't kick him out, dude. So I think what, what he was promoting the gates and I'm looking.
I like the gate, you know, but, but, I mean, I've seen them put concrete ones out there where they can't move, but then you gotta take a piece of equipment down there. I like, I like the big metal gate that you can close and lock.
Like the ones that are, uh, the actual access riddle bridge or?
Yeah, yeah, something like that. And, and what's that, um? Where you, where did I see? Oh, if you go up to the core, up by the lake, where you come into their big.
Yeah, they have those.
Big bowling gate. That's what I like.
I'm, I, I've been looking for grants on that, but I, I know on my end.
You're just kept the, what does it cost? Four or five grand? Put one up, not even that.
About thousand each.
That's probably what you're gonna do is get one of those big metal poles.
I would say try and, uh, at least in the cave road, which is our, our most likely.
Get a pole like that and you sink in the ground, then you just weld you some spots on it and slide over the next one on it.
Yeah. You gotta do it both sides.
Yeah.
Um, whenever, if, if we are to think about this, I can bring M O D in because I know there's M O D has some way there, but. If they're trying, if they're already offering us a soft closure, I'm pretty sure they, and they, they're willing as long as we doesn't. Through their road, but, and then, uh, spring road is, right? The other road on B side, that's the one that is, um, all righty.
All right. You have something?
Yeah.
Come on up there.
Hi.
How are you? What's your name?
I'm Aaron Beck.
Aaron Beck.
And I live out on Trotting Dick, out of Dixon.
Yes, sir.
And everything. All right. Yesterday, we have, we've had potholes in the road. Yesterday, they took and graded it. Now we got to where it's like this, bush board the whole way.
And it is grading too fast.
And everything. Well, now I says, well. I says, I know what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna come down and complain about it.
That your? Yeah.
Everything. Because I tell you what, it makes my car really sound rattly now.
They graded it just yesterday.
Just, just yesterday because I caught him on camera.
Yeah, if it's like that, if they was, they was moving too fast with the grader and left bush board, it, it got. That's what caused that.
But it, it's worse now than what it was with potholes.
Yeah.
And that.
But after the weekend's over and rain, I'll have them fix it for you.
All right, okay. That's all I have to do.
Yeah.
And I wanna, well, there's another thing. I wanna ask another question.
Yes, sir.
What would it cost to have that road paved? If the individual pave, uh, pave, have it paved?
How long, how long is it? Do you know?
It's not that long of a road. It goes from ten street in Dixon, I was there, to the county line, which is not far.
I'd say it's a mile.
But probably a mile, yeah.
I'd say you're probably looking at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So I'd say so, yeah.
I know somebody asked me to try to find out, cause he said, you know, it'd be nice that little piece of paint. That way you guys wouldn't have to worry about it.
Well. People think that, but after five years, then you've gotta have it sealed.
After five years, I ain't gonna be.
Hey, I, I hope.
That's been a problem over the years down here. People didn't look in the future. How they're gonna fix it.
Yeah.
And that's where they're into the problems that they have, what they have on blacktop.
All right, there's another, I'll tell you what, since I'm here, there's another short road. Over there in the Amish community. It's getting bad again. Uh, it's on crest. It's just a little very short road from accounting, you know.
Hey.
Cave, cave road.
Yeah.
It's getting bad.
When, when was y'all in it?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
And that.
All right. I'll, I'll get them down here next week. We'll get them, we'll get them.
All right. Hey, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. I'll get it taken care of.
All right.
You was going one day and she ever did. She was nervous coming in here doing that.
I know.
I also feel it.
So.
You don't like.
I know.
And she, uh, that's the one.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Gina, the name spelled B E C K or B E C H K? For me, do you know it?
Uh, I, I don't know him. I don't know how he.
We just wrote it down as B E C K, didn't we?
Thank you.
If they say something, I'm gonna say Whitney did it.
Gina, glad I brought something to your life.
You know, that one that was in here two weeks ago?
No, it's not the box.
Not the box.
That's what it tastes like.
Oh.
You gotta, yeah, you just gotta soak them in, soak them in water. Yeah. That's the way it works.
If you look at the box, it's apparently. What do they call it? Uh, extra crispy. I guess they're designed to be overbaked and people must not like.
They're not like people. Yours is an extra soggy then. Oh.
For a while at Walmart, they got rid of their yellow tag section for boxes and cans. They put up the yellow tag section again. It's just on my list. I check every time I've been there. This time you get some stuff out of it. I also picked up some big huge family size dented cans of chicken noodles. If you get a three dollar can of something for seventy-five cents, why not buy it?
It's like you damaged it on purpose to get them.
Definitely does. I seen him in the store one day throwing stuff on the floor.
Well, whoever may have been to that, uh, dented it before I got there and somebody put a yellow tag on there before I got.
I'm gonna be watching you now, Darrell.
Watch for you two minutes here. Hold still.
I'm gonna follow him in the store.
I said, say it's mommy dent the can.
The price of food today. I was looking at it. It's like a chicken noodle soup used to be what? A quarter, thirty-five cents per can of chicken? No. That's a buck seventy-five, two bucks.
Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about. That these were the big family size cans that were three times normal ones.
Yeah.
For three dollars. You get a three dollar can for seventy-five cents like my total on gas prices.
Yeah. Exactly.
You know, I'm not sure that guy, that maybe this came in. I think he might be one of the guys that, uh, that hauls the Amish from job to job.
Uh, he looked familiar. That's what I'm thinking. I've seen him in a white van.
I think he hauls stuff for the Amish community. I think he hauls them to construction sites and stuff like that.
Man, I was looking at my garden, my tomato plants that I went through. I got tomatoes all over.
A lot of people the other day, the hail's falling there for their dogs up, so they gotta replant. My wife's dog got. Looked like a ball of peanut.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about my wife's Denali. That tree busted up, most of the hail, but the very back of a vehicle got hit.
Yeah.
You know where this first campsite is? Old one shop, not the fifth, not the arena one, the other one. Lost from one hundred, two hundred. Campsite's on this front side.
Yeah.
I left my truck parked there a little bit overnight. Tried to smash it with a. It didn't get in, but they tried like some, but. So I got one of them saved right. Let's learn. Of course, the wife told me shouldn't do that.
No, we're ready to get in there.
Use the cap on the same side.
Yeah. Figure out what truck is gonna let me take out. Figure out what truck don't they haul out of your field.
I don't know. I haven't told you that. He's been trying for years to get my trucks.
I'd go where sneak around and look at them.
You don't have to sneak around. I've got many for it.
Better have a shop down in Charing.
Yeah, I went down the road the other day and I seen that one. It's his uncle on that one. He was showing them to me, but I stopped because don't get out here. That dog's not friendly. He goes, everywhere else with that dog's friendly, you can get out. He goes, that one up the road, no, don't get out.
I know what you've got your own. Seventy-two.
Mm-hmm. See the steps there? How do you go look at it? Was that an automatic? That's all it was. That means it's cheaper. That means it's cheaper.
You got a shed for it. It will have no rest for you, though.
No. At least they get a lot of the rough, bad rough, because they went out running around in the salt. It's always bad. It's more certain.
You know, most vehicles after you drive around in the salt, I don't think, do those, uh, brushless car washes, do they spray out from underneath?
Yeah.
That's a good idea to put that in. I mean, a lot of these.
What the hell, tell them guys over, what areas around the western side for a short period of time, let's get these thing and raise these beds up and power wash them frames. There was still salt that deep on the frame top.
Yeah.
The only thing that's gonna do is eat away.
Yeah, you gotta keep them.
Uh, shoot that thing and I'd spray some oil on it or something.
Yeah.
There's gotta be some better oil you can spray on them.
Yeah, anything, anything help.
But they just left it on.
Yeah, you can't, can't do that. About after every storm, they need sprayed off.
They need to be clean.
Don't have a little car wash. Uh, we're gonna have to drive through.
It's power washing, don't you?
Yeah, you know what's bad? Moda up here, their wash bay is outside. And whenever you, you know what, thirty-two degrees or thirty degrees, gonna do with the water hose? But Rala up there, it's got a drive, you can drive a tractor trailer in it and it's a heated wash bay.
Yeah.
But up here, they don't, they don't have one. About thirty miles up the road, they got a state of art building to clean and stuff. They'll have one up here. I said, I believe I'd have a convoy and take my truck to Rala.
Is there this question? Would they be willing to let me pay to clean them off, uh, or would it be too costly to drive them out?
No, I don't.
They've got the stuff to clean them at their shop.
You know, I don't.
Okay, okay.
But it's outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The issue is that the weather's twenty degrees, but a little zero, you.
I don't know if they got the floor drains in the shops in Texas. I really, when we bought that, I could've been.
Uh, we don't have floor drains. Up here, they've got a place you can back onto and it's got a slope spot with the drain, but when you go to spraying a fire hose out there to wash these trucks off, they have to get almost wet and fall, so that's a liability. You know, if they had one, I don't think Moda was, uh, I don't think they would, they'd be paying a lot of. Trucks off.
You could have fifteen acres.
You know, I'm from Michigan. I understand what some does to a vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, around here, it's a lot true, but I'm just, during the winter, once a week, you get a wash of the undercar. It's just not a choice.
There's one of them trucks that, uh, they had, I think on the east side, I think it's one of them older Ford, but they went to try to take the drain plug out of the oil pan and twisted the whole, the bottom of the oil panel was rusted off of it.
And that would be perfectly normal.
That's under there. It's not, it, there's no way to get under there to clean it under the cab. We, we need one. I built an attachment to go on a garden hose, basically just a bent piece of metal to stick under there and spray. I mean, it's
But this shit with these.
It's not high pressure enough to do what it needs to do, but it works somewhat.
I got a forty-two hundred.
Forty-four hundred.
Yeah, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Cold weather and needing to be indoors.
You know, and it was hard for the county to have one for, well, you probably never did it. I mean, for sheriff vehicles, uh.
But you save money for some hourly wage, some power washing, first of all.
Yeah.
About the time you'd say, even the depth you on the, on, on patrol, you don't have first step.
See, I got something that would do that. I got that forty-four hundred PSI washer I used for jelly.
Yeah.
But I got two rollers, one's that long and one's that long. It's got the sprayers. You just turn it upside down, you roll it under the vehicle.
Right.
And it would shoot forty-four hundred PSI underneath your vehicle to clean it. I can show you how to fix, fix yours. You wouldn't have to get that. It looked like a, I'll show you what it is. It just hit me. It worked perfect under your vehicle. They use them for cleaning sidewalks, driveways.
Yeah.
How much do they make sign vacation?
He's at a conference. Yeah, that's the realm, that's the realm. There we go. It looks. This one's come from Lowe's, but this is what they look like, but I got a one from Hot today. They use, they run the hot water through. It's on wheels, but it's got four sprayers. You just roll it underneath there.
Yeah.
It would do that. They're cheap. Hundred bucks. You put it on your, on your lawn, but you can do it along the lawn. That way you can just roll it underneath your vehicle and spray it under, carry it off.
Yep.
Sure, thank you. I haven't got any broom call.
That's a good thing.
My first five years here, I thought I took fifty of them. Oh.
We'd have a lot of rain, hold on. I see it.
Oh, yeah. Once you do get time, you get to part up and you're going back fixing what you already fixed.
Yeah, yeah. Going backwards and straight forward. I don't like this, but.
Part of it. And then the air gun, we cup it up, it's too hard and you gotta wet it to do something with it.
After Mrs. White came in here a while back, we went over and worked on Basin Road. And, uh, we went over.
I seen her the other day. She loves.
We went over there yesterday. There was one spot on that whole road that, uh, the last drain had got up, that created a problem, but it was at the lower end of the ditch and there wasn't anywhere to go. That's the only spot that had messed up on that whole road up.
They seen her somewhere. She stopped and told me, tell you.
She said she went to Andy too and.
Yeah.
And told him something.
Yeah.
I see where she went.
Yeah, she did. She really did. Her mom, I seen it in her mom. She sends me that a lot. She's a sweetheart. Her mom's there, she's there too.
I know.
I go and dance Crocker D D, but she was telling me, they think it was a hard stack of alcohol. But she's having problems with allergies. Yeah, here it is. Here's what she sent me. You know, she lived on base on that pretty drop off the hill. She passed away. The girl.
Yeah.
Said. Did you know Shillings?
Uh, I don't think so.
Not Williams. Her name was Shelly. Her name, man, too.
I wanna say she was married to, uh, was her first husband.
One of them, she was still with her pals, was a boyfriend or husband. Her boy was often on there too.
Yes.
But, yeah. Her mom sent me that.
You know, her mom. Is she still any brother?
Who, mom? No, she lives out in Texas County with her husband. But she's always told me she goes, that's my house. She goes, I pay for everything. I told him she was cheap and that, and I remember living there, getting stuff stolen. She paid for everything. Every time I went and worked at that house, the house needs to be going completely done. The windows, the heating and cooling got worked in it. She used to sit in the old stove to heat it. But when you walk through the house, you can look at the ceiling through the sheet rock. Walls, carpet.
And where?
You turn on the basin, you know, in the, in the D D, turn right on basin. You know, right before you drop off the hill, the dizzy car, dizzy lives down the hill, right?
Yeah.
Right before you drop off the hill, the dizzy on the right, right there.
No, I think we're about to call it.
We're getting ready to call it.
You guys do one Monday? Can I get a copy of Monday's minutes?
Monday.
Mission meeting on Monday?
I don't have any idea where they're at, Darrell. I went.
Monday, we did bank statement and do you do anything else?
Monday it wasn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Thought there was something on there.
Oh, Dave was here.
It was bank statements and.
Bank statement.
They had the county attorney review. That's the only thing on the agenda.
Yeah, that was it.
That was it, yeah. I didn't think it was much. We got, um, on the twenty-eighth, at ten AM. MRPC is gonna be down here. Standable's our partnership.
It's got real good on you.
For a, um, they're gonna do the Fort Leonard Wood Study for the housing kickoff study. That's on the twenty-eighth.
That's on Wednesday.
Yep.
Oh, that's our meeting thing.
On Wednesday.
Do you know anything about this? Any, uh, meeting supposedly was going on the website, um, something related to mode?
Room?
My understanding is that the owner of anybody towing contacted you regarding it. I have a feeling he was referring to the meeting at St. Robert, uh, the Plac County Growth Alliance, but he said he had contacted you about it. Bushley? You know who I'm talking about? Okay.
He contacted me the other day about going to a tow meeting in Springfield.
Okay.
Then he asked me about the big deal that happened with the sewer district in St. Robert.
I'm interested. What do you know about it? A connecting sewer to water line is not a normal problem.
Alright, let me give you the history of this suburb. And, and me, this year was an honest mistake, but let's go back where the suburb was built. The husband and wife, it'll go through a divorce.
Can I remind you, with subdivisionists?
Ridge Creek.
Okay, thank you.
Um, she took over the water and he, you know, they went through their divorce. Well, then she wasn't paying the electric bill and they were shutting down the, all the wells up there. People had no water. I was getting a lot of complaints here and the only thing I could do was go through the state. I got ahold of the state D N R and the water commission and everybody. And then finally come down and I don't know if it was forced on them, but normally it pretty much is. St. Robert took over the water. Sewer district had to take over the sewer. No big deal. Now comes your problem. I give you the water and I give you the sewer for that. And no, there's not a map of any water or sewer lines up there.
Wow.
Okay, now, they built all them homes, everything goes fine. The last home they just built on this street. St. Robert come up, the water's in front. There's, this is our meter and they found the valve up on the other end. They go, that must be your sewer. They tap into it. They're all standing there. They tap into what was just hooked in the water line. Even though the tracer wire come across, the sewer tracer water was right there over top of it. So what they found out was the sewer come to here, the water come to here. Okay, and the sewer tracer wire come over top of the water. So when they dug down, they found their wire. Of course you're gonna tap into it. I mean, it was a, it's a sad mistake. You know, and, and people go, oh, you, how, how can anything possible happen? There's why, because somebody saw the water in the sewer. They shouldn't even be that close together in the first place. But they were both dead in line. But the sewer, you know, the tracer wire was laying over top of the water line. It affected three homes. It's all affected.
So the core of the issue was that previous private contractor, previous private developer had screwed the situation up and
Yeah.
Robert's personnel relied upon.
Whoever put the water in the sewer in, they got extra wire. They laid it there on the ground. Well, it happened to be right over top of the water.
Okay, okay.
So when they're tracing it, it's right there. The tracer says we're there. They pull it up, yep. It's the right color tracer wire.
Just had it over the wrong line.
Yep. All of them.
But the point is, it wasn't either the sewer district or the city.
You can't truly blame either one. You know, it's just a, it's a sad deal that happened, yes. It's unfortunate. Insurance companies will take care of it. I mean, they're taking care of it. Yeah, cause I got a call by one of the customers up right now, one up there.
That, that, that.
You gotta remember, this is gray water line, uh, which is still sewer. But, um, still, it affected three houses.
Now, again, it's not the homeowners insurance. It's out of the city's insurance and sewer district's insurance.
Sewer district.
Okay, so we're not gonna have homeowners that are seeing the bills increase because of this mess.
Sewer district's taking care of it.
Okay, thank you.
They done the right thing. They said, we hooked it up. And they did. Even though the tracer wire showed that was the sewer line, it was not. There was a dead in water line up there. It was for future development, even further ups what it was for. But somehow they got it crossed. The tracer wires.
Tracer wire, which is.
The tracer wire was the problem.
And now the city or the sewer district, they had to do with tracer wire was the previous owner.
Previous owner. See, they don't have a map of nothing. They're mapping it as they go now. And St. Robert's getting ready to put the new water tower in over there. Then they're gonna have a map of everything. But they're mapping as they go. As they go in and fix problems, they're making a map. This part here was just a, it was sad, but you know, you can't. Like Zach said, the sewer district, he goes, we screwed up. You know, we went, we, we took the tracer wire, which was the tracer wire for the sewer, but the previous ownership let it extend too far and go across the water. So, yeah, it was a sad deal, but but at least they owned up to it. That was a key right there to me, holding it up to it.
Thank you, Jane.
So I'm gonna do, I go, what you can do? I mean, when you, you were forced. I mean, when you, you were forced to take over something, you take it over, but you have no map of anything. That makes it hard. They're doing everything possible to make sure that subdivision, and it is, it's nice. They got the water in the sewer. It's taken care of now. Before, the homeowners had to take care of their own pump out back. Now the sewer district is responsible for that pump, which saves the homeowner a bunch of money.
I was upstairs with the court case with that subdivision. I.
You remember it.
Oh, yeah. I, well, once you said Ridge Creek, then I understand what we're dealing with.
Oh, what do you do?
This specific subdivision, I do not believe was mentioned at the city council. Now you mentioned it, I understand pretty well.
And, and he asked me about it and I said, look, there was problems. I turned it over to the state because that's the only authority I had to help these people, which it turned out great, cuz then the state turned around and said, hey, you're gonna take water, you're gonna take sewer. Okay. And they've been going along. How long has this been going on? Five, ten, eight? Probably six years they've had it, maybe seven. So they're mapping as they go, but they don't have, like the city knows where all their water lines go. Ninety, ninety-five percent of them is in the sewers. They know where they go. But now you're taking over something, you're going in blind. And I'm sure when they put in all the new water lines in for the new well, they're gonna be hitting stuff. They're gonna find them. They're gonna find them, trust me. You, you.
I get it.
But, you know, he took care of the people, what the guy was asking. He was very nice about it. He wanted to know what I could do and I told him I could clean this and this, you know, but the wife didn't want nothing to do with it. She wanted it replaced, so I just gave him price to replace the water, water softener, water heater.
Yeah, so.
But as soon as it happened, St. Robert had planned well drilling out there. They had to replace the, good thing they have a check valve on there, so nothing to get into the whole system. So it stopped right there. That's why you have your checks and balances, which was a great thing. They had to replace it. St. Robert had to replace, I think, a pressure tank and a couple things right there. And then plan, I mean, they totally shocked out of that well. They ran the PPM real high up on the chlorine and ran it through everything, so that, that's fine.
I can ju, you mentioned water softener, water heater. You know what's going through my mind. I can just imagine. If my wife were out there in Ridge Creek and she was dealing.
What would your wife, I mean, how would she react if she found out it went through all that? Would she want it fixed or replaced?
My wife's question would not be fix or replace. My wife's question is who hangs? My wife's question would not be fixing or replacing. My wife's question is who hangs?
Well, that was a case where you really couldn't hang nobody.
I didn't say, uh, personally to go after the Ridge Creek developers. It's not the city, it's not the sewer district and the Ridge Creek developers.
But if people, one guy goes, well, sewer line that big, water line's that big. I go, no. You got water lines that big. You got water line that big. You got sewer line that big. You got sewer line that big. They're all the same.
Which is why you're with the tracer wire.
Ridge Creek, Ridge Creek is, is, has a lot of what we call up, up tanks or pressure, where it's pumped, force, force sewer. That's what it is, the force sewer. So the two inch force sewer line going up catching two inch water line up there. Both two inch lines.
And that's the whole point of the tracer wire. So this doesn't happen. The tracer wire was putting it wrong.
No, it wasn't put it wrong, just too long. When they put it in the ditch, you know, they had the wire hanging out and then they filled the ditch back in. Well, the wire was over here. Well, of course, the water come right up to where the.
And also, as you said, the lines were too close.
Yes. Hey, it is what it is. I mean, they got it fixed. You know, move on. People will get taken care of. They'll take care of. So. You know, they wanna know how somebody could make it up, you know? Especially around pressure lines or two inch line. Cause you get a two inch sewer line and a water line. In the same pipe. They're both the pressure pipe. Pressure fittings, pressure pipe. I was always hoping people would mark them, blue and green. At the end of a pipe, just spray paint before you cover them. Like the last six feet of it. Spray paint it. That way, whenever it's dug up, it's green or it's a blue. Blue's water, green sewer. Yellow's gas.
Cause the dig ride, I mean, on top of the ground, they're color coded for reeds.
That's why the wires are color coded. See? You got a color, color tracer wire. Well, yeah, I got the right wire. We're here. We're ready to fix it.
No.
It didn't work out that way, but and you know what? Really, I was proud of the sewer district stepping up and saying, we screwed up. Even though they followed exactly the way they're supposed to follow it, their workers write tracer wire. Things happen. And this is what happened. Well, you have insurance. So then actually, it's why you carry insurance.
Most accidents are not accidents. It sounds like this one was.
Oh, this is a truly, that, that's what I'm saying. This one here, just, everything felt wrong. Just, it did. And I'm like, that's, it's unfortunate, but it happened. Like emotion.
Yeah.
So say go in favor.
Well, thank you, Gene, for your clarification.
Yep.